It's four o'clock on June 27th. I'd like to thank everybody for being here at our special council meeting. Becky, can you call the roll, please ma'am?
Please. Mayor Bill Hastings.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Chris Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Janet Court.
Here.
Councilmember Duran Dowdell.
Here.
Councilmember Jennifer Jordan Stockdick.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you ma'am. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Fred Willis with the Holy Covenant United Methodist Church. Following that, we will have Corporal Pena with the Katy Police Department, and he will lead us in the pledge to the US flag and then the Texas flag. Pastor Willis?
Thank you mayor. Let us pray. God, I want to say thank you on behalf of all those who've gathered here today. Thank you for the amazing things that happened to us and through us and sometimes even in spite of us. Amidst of the turmoil of this season, we also thank you for your being ever-present with us. God, today these men and women gather to make decisions for our community. Be with them. Provide them moments of deep thought and wisdom. Help them to use their best skills and judgment as they consider the merits and problems of each matter placed before them. May they have a confidence in what is good and fitting, as well as the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. We trust and we believe that all the people gathered here today are intent on doing good work to represent the people of Katy fairly and well, no matter who they might be, their station of life, or where they come from. May the efforts of this group be blessed as we ask for your help. May they always find a way to move forward with a shared purpose. And may the things that are truly important unite us, all to do what is just and right for everyone even in a time of great separation amongst your children. To Lord, do you repay, amen.
Thank you Pastor Willis. Corporal Pena.
The pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. The pledge to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you Corporal Pena. And thank you again Pastor Willis. Thank you for being here and taking your time to do that for us. We will move on to item number three. This is public comments and I'd like to remind the audience that you will have three minutes to address any item that is not on the agenda. And let me remind you that City Council cannot respond. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Anybody that would like to participate via teleconference and speak this time, please press nine or raise your hand. Okay, having no one wish to speak, we will move on to item number four. Comments from the public on any item on the agenda. Anyone wishing to participate via teleconference that would like to speak at this time, please press nine or raise your hand. And again, having no one, we will move on to item number five. The fiscal year 2020 monthly financial report through May the 31st, 2020. And this is an information item only. Moving to item number six, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion to move as presented.
Second.
Motion by Harris, second by Councilwoman Court. All in favor? Or is there any discussion?
Stockdick.
Oh, Stockdick, I'm sorry. Any discussion?
No discussion on the consent agenda mayor.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will move on to item number seven. Consider a resolution. Item 7A is considered a resolution adopting the Harris County Multi-Hazard Litigation Action Plan update. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? No discussion, we'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 7B, consider a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the Texas Department of Emergency Management's, otherwise known as TDEM, coronavirus fund terms and conditions. This is a grant application through Waller County. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? No discussion, we'll call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right.
All opposed, same sign. Item 7C, consider a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an equipment lease purchase agreement with Motorola Solutions Incorporated. These are radios that are requested by Katy Police Department.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 7D, consider a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement for financing, construction, operation, and maintenance of the Katy Boardwalk facilities between the City of Katy, Texas, Katy Management District Number One, and Katy Development Authority. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 7E, FM 1463 project. Consider a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement between the City of Katy, Texas, and the Katy Development Authority funding FM 1463 project, and this is with Metro funds. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? No discussion, we'll call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 7E, I.A., consider a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an advanced funding agreement with the State of Texas for voluntary utility relocation contributions on state highway improvement projects. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? We'll call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item number eight, consider an ordinance appointing Charles Anthony Weir III as regular member to the City Planning and Zoning Commission filling the vacancy created by Kenneth A. Berger.
Motion.
Second.
Hang on. Ms. McCrea, will you read the caption please?
We're good mayor, that was the full caption of that ordinance.
That was the full caption?
That's on, presented on the agenda, that's unorthodox, but it is.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry.
You're good.
We had a motion, didn't we?
Chris, and the second was, I'm sorry.
Jennifer.
Any discussion? We'll go ahead and call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, we will move into executive session authorized by Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with an attorney regarding pending litigation, attorney-client privilege information. And we will go into executive session at 4:12.
Looks like we're just missing the mayor.
Looks like we're just missing the mayor.
I don't see Chris. There he is. Okay. Looks like we have everybody.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to welcome Mr. Charles Weir to the CPZ. Got an opportunity to speak to him this morning, and I think it's a good choice to bring him on board. Also, I hope everybody had a great Father's Day, all you fathers out there, and got time to spend time with your families. Also, the thing that we voted on earlier, the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program, a lot of reading there, but a lot of great information, and so if anybody would like to check into that, it's really something good to look at. And I hope that everybody has a great, safe Monday. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dowdell. Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Thursday, the Katy Cowgirls held a parade for World War II veterans. Mr. Brody there at Katy City Park, several council members came. It was a great time. Police Department, Fire Department, Public Works, I got to ride along with Public Works, and lots of different police agencies were there, and fabulous job. Katy High School fans, volunteers, they came together and donated money and put out signs congratulating all the graduates that are graduating here on Wednesday. And if you'll drive down Highway 90, you can see the signs around Katy High School and by the train depot. So, great time. Go Tigers. Thank you.
I'd just like to say, my youngest graduated from Katy High School last year, and so I just want to say congratulations to all the students that are graduating this week on Wednesday. Super excited for all you guys, and I hope everybody had an amazing Father's Day.
Councilman Carroll?
I have no report.
I just want to remind everybody listening that KCM is in need of donations. If you go to their Facebook page, you'll see a diagram which lists all the different items that they are needing. And then I also helped volunteer put out those signs this weekend, so I kind of want to address the graduating seniors, if that's okay. And what I want to say is, and I brought it down so I could remember it, this year with all its challenges, disruptions, and disappointments will definitely define you going forward, but it's up to you as to how it defines you. You can choose to dwell in disappointment and anger over the things you missed this year, or you can choose to rise above it and learn compassion for others and self-reliance. Your future is before you. Embrace it, and only you can choose who you want to be. So, congratulations and best of luck going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. My report's going to be very short. We had a wonderful little parade for Mr. Brody, 95 years old, his birthday. He was quite the World War II war hero. A very interesting man to talk to, and I've gotten lots of calls from his family saying this is probably the highlight of his 95 years. So, everybody that took part in that, thank you so much. It was an honor to just be there and watch him smile and salute people. Other than that, graduates, congratulations. Been kind of a bummer for your graduation, but we all know that you're going to move on, and you will probably, hopefully, possibly have another graduation to look forward to. So with that, I'd just like to thank the community for all of their support during this pandemic and to thank them for, you know, trying to just do what is right. And we've fortunately been very lucky here in the city, and I know that we all appreciate the hard work and the diligence they're doing to try to keep up with all these numerous orders and changes in their lives. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
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 Looks like we're just missing the mayor.
Everybody back now?
I don't see Chris. Oh, there he is. Okay. Looks like we have everybody.
Okay, we will open the meeting back up to the public at 4:45. Item number 10, consider any action deemed necessary as a result of the effective session. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion that we continue legal negotiations with, by the city attorney.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion?
Who is the second?
No discussion. We'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 11, councilman's reports. Let's see, I'm going to start with Duran.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to welcome Mr. Charles Weir to the CPZ. Got an opportunity to speak to him this morning, and I think it's a good choice to bring him on board. Also, I hope everybody had a great Father's Day, all you fathers out there, and got time to spend time with your families. Also, the thing that we voted on earlier, the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program, a lot of reading there, but a lot of great information, and so if anybody would like to check into that, it's really something good to look at. And I hope that everybody has a great, safe Monday. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dowdell. Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Thursday, the Katy Cowgirls held a parade for World War II veterans. Mr. Brody there at Katy City Park, several council members came. It was a great time. Police Department, Fire Department, Public Works, I got to ride along with Public Works, and lots of different police agencies were there, and fabulous job. Katy High School fans, volunteers, they came together and donated money and put out signs congratulating all the graduates that are graduating here on Wednesday. And if you'll drive down Highway 90, you can see the signs around Katy High School and by the train depot. So, great time. Go Tigers. Thank you.
Councilwoman Stockton?
I'd just like to say, my youngest graduated from Katy High School last year, and so I just want to say congratulations to all the students that are graduating this week on Wednesday. Super excited for all you guys, and I hope everybody had an amazing Father's Day.
Councilman Carroll?
I have no report.
Councilwoman Court?
I just want to remind everybody listening that KCM is in need of donations. If you go to their Facebook page, you'll see a diagram which lists all the different items that they are needing. And then I also, I was helped volunteer put out those signs this weekend, so I kind of want to address the graduating seniors, if that's okay. And what I want to say is, and I brought it down so I could remember it, this year with all its challenges, disruptions, and disappointments will definitely define you going forward, but it's up to you as to how it defines you. You can choose to dwell in disappointment and anger over the things you missed this year, or you can choose to rise above it and learn compassion for others and self-reliance. Your future is before you. Embrace it, and only you can choose who you want to be. So, congratulations and best of luck going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. My report's going to be very short. We had a wonderful little parade for Mr. Brody, 95 years old, his birthday. He was quite the World War II war hero. A very interesting man to talk to, and I've gotten lots of calls from his family saying this is probably the highlight of his 95 years. So, everybody that took part in that, thank you so much. It was an honor to just be there and watch him smile and salute people. Other than that, graduates, congratulations. Been kind of a bummer for your graduation, but we all know that you're going to move on, and you will probably, hopefully, possibly have another graduation to look forward to. So with that, I'd just like to thank the community for all of their support during this pandemic and to thank them for, you know, trying to just do what is right. And we've fortunately been very lucky here in the city, and I know that we all appreciate the hard work and the diligence they're doing to try to keep up with all these numerous orders and changes in their lives. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion is the second. Is there any discussion? None? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Y'all have a wonderful, wonderful day.
Thanks. Bye.